Welcome, everybody, to our recognition night. If you could please stand so we can say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Lafayette Parish School Board Recognition Meeting. My name is Annette Samick. I am the Chief Academic Officer, and I have the privilege of recognizing many of tonight's students and adults. Thank you to the Principal, Mr. Jeff DeBittas, and to the David Thibodeau STEM Magnet Academy staff for allowing us to use your facility tonight. Thank you to the LPSS staff that assisted with registration tonight. One brief announcement, and that is, I would like to announce that there are nineteen seniors that are going to be offered an LPSS Superintendent Golf Scholarship Award totaling $31,000. This is a one-year award. Students from our high schools will receive amounts of $2,500, $1,500, or $1,000, and they are scholarships to their university of their choice. So I did want to announce that. Those awards were just made public recently, so congratulations to our seniors. Our first group to be recognized tonight is our district top fast-forward performer, so would you please stand and come to your left. For fast-forward honors, we have students that were identified as top game performers in the district. This student went from their first -- this is from their first assessment to their last assessment. This student is a kindergarten student from S.J. Montgomery, Mathather Elzande, and he went from struggling to advanced. Andrew Stringer, kindergarten student from Ernest Galette, went from struggling to proficient. Bethany Fall is a first grader from Austin, emerging to advanced first product. Juliana Mormon is from S.J. Montgomery, second grader, struggling to advanced second product. Gage Arseneau, a second grader from Live Oak, struggling to advanced third product. Emma Fall is a second grader from Ernest Galette, struggling to advanced third product. Laney Cleveland is a second grader from Carronkro Heights, went from struggling to advanced second product. Stephen Stringer is a second grader, Ernest Galette, struggling to advanced second product. Aiden Broussard is a second grader from Live Oak, struggling to proficient fourth product. Brooklyn Pommier, third grader from Dusan, struggling to proficient. Zaria Woods, fourth grader from Austin, struggling to advanced. Paige Parker is a sixth grader from Carronkro Middle, struggling to advanced second product. Xavier Senegal is a seventh grader from Acadian Middle, struggling to proficient second product. Our next award, students, if you would please stand, for the Lafayette Parish Elementary School Physical Fitness Winners, please come this way. All right, our first student present tonight is Darian Green, Carronkro Heights, eight years old. He has a top score, 498 points. Kyrie Benjamin from Myrtle Place is a ten-year-old, 533 points. London Huntsberry from Ernest Galette, eleven years old, 637 points. Maddox Andro from Woodvale, six-to-seven-year-old category, 337 points. Dalen Lewis, Dusan, he's a ten-year-old, 537 points. Ezekiel Hippolyte from Dusan, eleven years old, 616 points. Our overall team winner was Carronkro Heights, the coaches Mary Foss and Amanda Thomas. Congratulations. Participating in Baton Rouge at the Louisiana State Fitness Competition and placed third with 2,521 points is the team of London Huntsberry from Ernest Galette, Millen Turriac from Plantation, Ezekiel Hippolyte from Dusan, and Omari Dupas from Prairie. Congratulations to that team. All right, and we have a couple students that we omitted, Dentrell Morrison and Connor Freeman. Dentrell Morrison is from Carronkro Heights, eight years old. And also Connor Freeman from Greetheen Linden, nine years old. Alana Riggs, I'm sorry, Alana Riggs from Carronkro Heights, nine years old. Our Social Studies Fair winner, students from grades four through twelve are invited to compete in six categories of social studies. There is a school competition and a Lafayette Parish competition. Students who place first, second, or third can participate in regionals, and only first or second place in regionals can compete at state. So congratulations to all of our students who earned first, second, or third at the regional level. Joining us tonight at the elementary school level is Chandler Dew and Joseph Edmonds from Ernest Galette. They placed second in parish and first in regional. Carson St. Germaine from Ernest Galette placed second in parish and first in regional. Levi Abear from Myrtle Place placed first in parish and first in regional. And from Woodvale, Adian Capalio from Woodvale, second in parish, second in regional. Aiden Monso from Woodvale, first in parish, first in regional. And Savannah Blanco, Woodvale, first in parish, first in regional. And we have one student with us tonight, Ian Sutherland from LJ Alamont, first in parish, first in regional, and third place at state. Next up is Student of the Year. If elementary followed by middle followed by high, would please line up to my left.
Congratulations to the fifth-grade Students of the Year. Our first representative is LJ Alamont, Evan Schneider. Alice Boucher, Tyriani Phillips. Broussard Middle, Alea Dophany. Charles Burke, Miles Siner. Carronkro Heights, Lathan Kennedy. Dusan Elementary, Danielle St. Julian. Evangelion, Braylen Broussard. JW Falk, Frederick Augustine Jr. Ernest Galette, Katie Domain. J. Wallace James, Colin Yousi. Elio Judees, Lawrence Petrie. GT Linden, Gabriel Yokopicio Romero. Live Oak, De La Leje. Edgar Martin, Isabella Vasquez. Milton Elementary, Megan Tavares. S.J. Montgomery, Devon Aubrey. Myrtle Place, Asia Leday. I'm sorry, Austin Elementary, J.C. Pancho. Plantation Elementary, Aubrey McNeil. Ridge Elementary, Carter Leje. Westside Elementary, Leila Swaller. And Megan Tavares, if you'd come back out, she is our District Elementary Student of the Year. Paul Bro, Casey Francois. Carronkro Middle, Lilian Nguyen. Judees Middle, Chosen Watson. Lafayette Middle, Abigail Richard. Edgar Martin, Landon Dormin. Milton Middle, I'm sorry, Alexander Sonnier. Scott Middle, Jakia Arseneau. Thibodeau STEM, Cameron Scott. Youngsville Middle, Lydia Rashator. And Alexander Sonnier, come back out, please, eighth-grade Student of the Year for the District. High School Students of the Year, Katie Anna High, Quincy Damon. Early College Academy, Rhea Harrison. Lafayette High, Arthy Senthel. Northside High, Tucker Gilbo. And Thibodeau STEM, Shelley Barnaba. Congratulations, Students of the Year.
We do have three students we need to recognize, one for our Fast Forward Award for eighth-grade Paul Bro, Shadaya Baptiste. She went from struggling to advanced third product. Congratulations. And in Social Studies, from Prairie Elementary, Maya Wheeler and Carly Thibodeau, first place in parish and first place in regional. Cajun Code Fest is an annual coding competition open to all students and professionals with knowledge in software development or technology innovation. Four students from the David Thibodeau STEM Magnet Academy, with the assistance of our board member, Mr. Justin Centany, Alex Langclose from Wader, and Austin Clark from Halliburton, placed first in the K-12 Student Team category. They created an app for emergency preparedness from the Department of Homeland and Security. Their idea was selected as overall favorite by the judges. Michael Dunway from the Department of Homeland Security informed the boys that his department is considering making this app available for citizens in the state of Louisiana. Each team member will receive an iPad as part of their award. Dr. Ramesh Collier is Vice President for Research, Innovation, and Economic Development, is with us tonight for UL Lafayette, and will present the awards for Cajun Code Fest. Congratulations to our David Thibodeau STEM students, Nolan Marone, tenth grader. Dylan Martin, eighth grader. Fernando Martinez, eleventh grader. Marcos Garcia, eleventh grader. And there's a special presentation for the school. They are receiving a banner. Okay, at this time, we're going to recognize our students that were winners from Northside High for Mu Alpha Theta. If you're here, please come up on stage. As well as Lafayette High winners for Mu Alpha Gemini, if you'll also come up on stage. And if Armando DuPontis, if you're here, if you would come up on stage. Congratulations to Tiana Lindley and Jeannie Champ from Northside High School for representing their math club at the state competition. In Mu Alpha Theta for scrapbook, they placed third in state. Congratulations to Lafayette High School students, Arhi Senthel and Noah Prejon for placing first in state at the Mu Alpha Gemini Calculus I Team Event. Okay, our next group is the 2016-17 Louisiana All-State Speech and Debate. If you would please enter the stage. Students who have competed and placed first, second, or third in tournaments this year qualify to compete at the Louisiana High School Speech League State Tournament of Champions. At this year's state tournament, there were over fifty schools and four hundred students from across the state competing. Como High School was the most dominant school, placing nine out of twelve events while taking the state championship title in seven events, and for the third time in a row, third time in a row, Como High School has won first-place team sweepstakes and are the Louisiana State Speech and Debate champions. Congratulations to the Como Speech and Debate sponsors, Sandra Broussard and Jacob Simon. Making it to the finals and becoming members of the 2016-17 Louisiana All-State Speech League but not placing are Maggie Graham and Maggie Labardi. Okay, bear with me because some of these students are getting several certificates. So in Student Congress, we have state champion Ashlyn Jones. Ashlyn also won All-State Speech and Debate Oratory, third place, and she is also the Marilyn Clayman Renaissance Award winner for the state. Congratulations. So Hannah LeJourn is the Louisiana All-State Speech and Debate Lincoln Douglas Debate, second place. Taney Washington is Louisiana All-State Speech and Debate Declamation State Champion. And Rashawn Leday is Declamation, second place. Emily Guidry is Declamation, third place. And Elena Spira is next. She has Oratory State Champion and Dual Interpretation, third place. Quest Broussard. Quest Broussard is Prose Poetry State Champion, Dramatic Interpretation, third place, Duet, third place, Dual Interpretation State Champion, and the Morris Block Performing Arts Award winner. Paige Albright. Paige is our Prose Poetry Third Place winner, Dramatic Interpretation, second place, Duet, third place, Dual Interpretation, second place. Jack Ossen. Jack is Humorous Interpretation State Champion, Duet, fourth place, Dual Interpretation, third place. Destiny Darby, Humorous Interpretation, second place, Duet, fourth place. Taylan Ratliff is Dramatic Interpretation State Champion and Dual Interpretation State Champion. And we have Jacob Foster, Duet, second place. Alea Richard, Duet, second place. Good luck. I understand Nationals is right around the corner, so good luck with Nationals competition. And we have another Social Studies Fair winner we would like to announce and recognize, Lawrence Petrie from L. Leo Judees, second place in parish and second place in regional. Our 2016-17 Louisiana Music Educator Association, would our students please come to the stage? And I do know some of our high schools are having their honors program tonight, so attendance is a little bit lower. We do want to announce that the LMEA presents the Academic Excellence Award to sophomore, junior, and senior students, all-state members who have accumulated an overall GPA of 3.5 to a 4.0. Each LMEA director are mailed academic excellence certificates and medals for the students. With us tonight, from Lafayette High School, LMEA All-State Orchestra, Avery Battle. And Miguel Vasquez. And for our concert band for Lafayette High School, Alexia Legron. And for our symphonic band, Lafayette High School, Jordan McNamara. And Acadiana High School, Erin Mir, symphonic band. It's a pleasure to recognize our Louisiana State Literary Rally winners. With us tonight, from Lafayette High School for Accounting I, Division I, second place at state, this is Bailey Dore. From Northside High School, Agroscience II, Division II, second place, Kamani Laverne. From Lafayette High School, Calculus II, Division I, second place, Chad Wood. And from Carronkro High School, Computer Science I, Division I, first place and first place as a state overall winner, which means he was the absolute best in all categories, Austin Hawkins. From Lafayette High School, Journalism, Hannah Primo. From Lafayette High School, Spanish IV, third place, Emmeline Miller. Congratulations to the Northside High School 4A LHSAA semifinalist girls' basketball team. The team record this year was 26-8. Players are Harmony Chavis, Amy Guillory, Brandy Hughes, Tamara Oye, Tamara Johnson, Ashley Prejon, Janaye Thomas, and Brittany Smith. Ashley Prejon, Janaye Thomas, and Brittany Smith. A special congratulations, a special congratulations to Brittany Smith, who earned All-State Honorable And they are coached by Amy DeZormo and John Williams. So the Louisiana High School Athletic Association and the Coaches Association honors outstanding athletes and athletic scholars. I'm pleased to announce this year's group of all-state and academic all-state winners. Some spring sports may not have completed their awards by the time of this presentation, so if some students have earned the honor and we're not recognizing them, we will do so in our fall awards. From Acadiana High School, Quincy Damon for Boys Basketball, Boys Tennis, Academic All-State in both. Jonathan Simon in Football, All-State. Connor Surill, Tennis, Academic All-State. From Carron Crowe High School, Key Alfred, Cross-Country State Champion. Devon Begno Wrestling, sixth place state in one-hundred-and-thirty-two pounds. Taylor Clay Wrestling, second place in state, one-hundred-and-forty-five pounds. Billy Clay Wrestling, second place in state, one-hundred-and-eighty-two pounds. Como High School Shelby Savoy Wrestling, sixth place in state, one-hundred-and-sixty Haley Trahan Wrestling, fifth place in state, one-hundred-and-thirty-eight pounds. John Abear Wrestling, fifth place in state, two-hundred-and-twenty pounds. Tyler Hanson Wrestling, sixth place in state, one-hundred-and-twenty pounds. Lafayette High, Nalani Zino, Academic All-State in Girls Basketball, Volleyball, Softball. She is also the Wendy's Heisman High School Award winner. Northside High School Byron Zino Wrestling, first place in state, one-hundred-and-eighty-five All right, at this time, if the Acadiana High School Academy of Business Group for Life Smart team, if you would please come to the stage. And if we have representatives here from Judy's Middle School Band, if you would also come to the stage. Okay, from Acadiana High School, for the past three years, Acadiana High has won the state top award in Life Smart event for business academy. They have competed at the national level all three years in the Life Smarts National Competition. Congratulations to the Academy Director and sponsor Stephanie Bennett and the students,
How you doing? My name is Britt Lotchely, School Board Member, District Five. Judy's Middle is in my district. And very proud to introduce to you the Judy's Middle School Band under the direction of Band Director Courtney Hoover. These young students not only got all superiors here at District, they went on to state and got all superiors, and we'd like to just go ahead and recognize them. We don't have a list to do them student by student, but these Judy's Middle School Cardinals, all they know how to do is crank out superiors.
So I want to say congratulations to the Robotics Team Phenomena, thirty-six sixteen, with its number-one ranking in the Regional Robotics Tournament and world quarterfinalists. Sixty high school robotic teams from around the world competed for a spot in the World Championship in Houston. Students had an opportunity to compete against their international peers with teams from the USA, China, Turkey, and Mexico. Upon completion, these teams competed for a spot in the first robotics competition world championship. Robotics Team Phenomena, thirty-six sixteen, not only ranked first at the end of the qualifying matches, but went on to become the 2017 Bayou Regional Winners with alliance partners from Arkansas and South Carolina. The team included forty-three students from Lafayette Parish. The team thirty-six sixteen competed at the world competition for the third time. The team finished as world quarterfinalists. They have been invited by the state Senator Sharon Hewitt to participate in the Festival of Robotics, May twenty-fifth, at the Capitol. Team thirty-six sixteen is under the guidance of Como High School's teacher Lisa Rainey, who could not be with us tonight, so Ms. Bullinger and her team drivers are being recognized. Thank you and congratulations.
How you doing? It's me again, representing Acadiana High's land and soil judging team. Cameron Okwan, Dory Cormier, Lane Harden, and Andrew Thibodeau. And this group, if we would have had the meeting two weeks ago, would have been in Oklahoma competing. Acadiana Archery Team, if I'm not mistaken, finished third in state. And Ms. T., could you tell me, what did they do in Kentucky? Laney Duyong finished ninety-five out of over six thousand competitors. Our archery team is Joey Beard, Blake Como, Dory Cormier, Davin Corsi, Tyler Crater, Laney Duyong, Alexis Infield, Malika Hall, Lane Harden, Madison Nash, Peyton Savo, and And our poultry judging team was Cameron Okwan, Laney Duyong, Lauren Hernandez, and Go ahead and go on down and we'll get some pictures with the superintendent. And if I could, while I'm up here, I'm going to go ahead and mention Acadiana's indoor percussion team. They competed locally and I think finished third. They went on to compete in regionals. They had two competitions in Thibodeau and one in Hattiesburg, Mississippi. They went up and competed with over fifty other percussion teams at the world championships in Dayton, Ohio, and they did finish, if I'm not mistaken, in the top thirty. They were not able to attend tonight because they are at practice. So I just wanted to mention the percussion team, and I don't think it's on the agenda for this evening, but the Louisiana Athletics Association, Athletic Directors Association, gives an award each year to a male athlete and a female athlete of the year. I don't know if this has ever happened, but both of them are from Acadiana High. I know she plays volleyball and softball, Kennedy Smith. And representing Acadiana on the male side is Miles Hutchinson. He was a basketball and football player at Acadiana. I don't know if this has ever happened, but both athletes for the Louisiana Athletic Directors Association are from Acadiana High.
Okay, I am pleased to announce and congratulate, and this is, as you are probably well aware, a very small representation, of the Lafayette High School Mighty Lions Marching Band. Thank you for being here tonight. They have been selected to participate in the Macy's Day Parade in New York City for And now our Lafayette High School Varsity Winter Guard team. Congratulations to the state champions for the Varsity Winter Guard. They competed in the Louisiana-Mississippi Color Guard and Percussion Circuit and won twenty-seven state championships and are Scholastic 2A Champions. They had an undefeated season and the highest score of the year. The Lafayette Mighty Lions Varsity Winter Guard was presented with the state champions' banner, which I believe they're holding. Congratulations to the director and to his squad, Mr. Art Kilcrest. And now time for a few adult awards. If Ms. Kimberlin Slago and Alyssa Broussard and Sarah Gross would come up to the stage, Our first award is for Kimberlin Slago. She is the first teacher from Louisiana to be named Spring Board National Faculty. Hold up, Kimberlin, hold up. Kimberlin is a National Board Certified Teacher who currently serves as the English Department Head right here at David Thibodeau STEM Magnet Academy. Last year, she was honored as a Spring Board Teacher of Distinction, awarded to teachers who demonstrate excellence and innovation in instruction. This year, she has been named a member of the Spring Board National Faculty, becoming the first and only Spring Board National Trainer from the state of Louisiana. And we have Alyssa Broussard has been named by the College Board as a Spring Board Teacher of Distinction. The Teacher of Distinction Award honors teaching excellence and identifies the best in the profession. Spring Board is excited to recognize teachers who exemplify the core principles of Spring Board's success indicators, have inspired a love for learning in their students, and have distinguished themselves as leaders in their schools. Alyssa is the second teacher in Lafayette Parish to have received this honor, and Lafayette Parish is currently the only school district using Spring Board to have more than one teacher of distinction. Ms. Broussard is currently a teacher at LJ Alamo Middle School. And our next winner is Sarah Gross. She's a teacher at JW Fawkes Elementary School, and we recognized her at our last meeting, but we brought her back because she has been selected as the Louisiana State semifinalist Teacher of the Year. She will be honored at the Teacher Leader Summit in New Orleans in June, and she will also attend the Excellent Educator Session. On July twenty-eighth, she will be honored at the Eleventh Annual CISO JP Card Educator Excellence Gala in Baton Rouge.
If I could have everyone's attention, could I please get Mr. James Thomas to come up? While he's coming up, I'd like to tell you guys why I chose to honor this gentleman tonight. Maybe about three months ago, on Valentine's Day night, Northside High School Basketball Team, they were playing Beauchamp High School at Beauchamp. Probably about ten minutes into our trip coming home, as I was following the bus in my truck, I noticed the bus start to slow down. I noticed the bus brake lights come on. It came to a halt. I noticed the boys' basketball team and the coaches start to file out the bus, and then I noticed they start to push the bus. So I put my truck in park, hopped out, and we all pushed the bus. Bus had a little, small mechanical problem. Things happen. We pushed it onto a side road, and we are stuck. I can't load everybody up in my truck. It's freezing cold outside. I think to myself, now who can I call? Who can I call? Who can I call? I know a million bus drivers. James comes to mind. I give him a call. It's Valentine's Day night. He answers the phone. Hey, Tim, what's up? I say, listen, small problem. We're stuck. I need some help. If you could possibly load up a bus and come scoop us up. I can't tell you exactly where we are. I'm going to have to find the closest house, try and map it. I was able to do it. I give him the coordinates. He says, sure, not a problem. I'll be there ASAP. About fifteen minutes later, I don't want anybody to think that you were speeding. About fifteen minutes later, he gets there. Everyone says, thank you, thank you, thank you. We appreciate it. It's cold outside that night, y'all. We load everybody up. He gets them to their destination, saves the day, and I wanted to honor him. But it didn't end with that, sadly enough. I got a text message, possibly maybe about an hour after that, and the message said, "She left." My response is, who? He says, "My date for the night." And he mentions her name, but I'm not going to mention the young lady's name. I proceed to apologize profusely. Man, I am so sorry, dude. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. His response, "It's okay. It wasn't meant to be." The next morning, I have a screenshot of a text message that went on between him and her. The message from her simply stated, "Tonight was special. You need to get your priorities straight." His response, "I am sorry you feel that way. If you feel going rescue fourteen-to-eighteen-year-old kids stuck on the side of the highway in the freezing cold isn't of the highest priority, then again, I am sorry. But you honestly helped me prioritize my own list. Sorry again. Wish you the best. Happy Valentine's Day." So this gentleman took the time to just simply say, hey, listen, I'm going to go help out the team. They're stuck. And he thought she understood. They don't talk to this day. I asked him for an update. They don't, they don't, they don't talk. But I just wanted to recognize him because he took the time to sacrifice something that he didn't think he was sacrificing at the time, and to this day, I ask him, hey, are you okay with it? And he said, hey, listen, I mean, it was a priority. Y'all were stuck. I had to come no matter what. So with that being said, I just wanted to tell you thank you, and I love you from the
I do know sometimes we have some late arrivals. Is there any student who arrived after we announced your award and you did not get Looks like we're good. Then I do want to thank you all for coming tonight. Congratulations to all of our 2017 graduates, and congratulations to all of our award winners tonight. Thank you.